Well, I guess we'd better call a meeting to order than if it's five thirty.
Some kidney stones to dogs.
First item on the agenda is consideration of minutes of the January twenty-five meeting. You'll come to order.
Sorry.
I will give you a brief interval here to ask questions or give corrections if you think there are some warranted. If not, then the chair will declare that the minutes will be approved as read. Okay, you had plenty of time.
Yep.
They are approved. Next item on the agenda is public comments about presumably about other items that are not on the business agenda for tonight. Is there anybody that has anything of any other subject to communicate to the commission? If not, we will move on to business. I guess I'm presuming that items one, two, three, four, and five, we would consider as a group or.
I think you could if the applicant was okay with that, yeah. Are you okay with that?
Yep. Can you kind of fill us in thumbnail recap of what the request is?
So, yeah, the, um, the request here, the first case is for one, one oh eight East Third, which would be to the direct west of the one that we previously approved at one oh five. So it's a single one ten, okay, yeah, get Monday. Uh, so this is the same set of plans, single family home. Same kind of rendering, same plan. This is the same floor plan that was approved previously. It's just part of the conditions we have to, to do each, each one of these as an A H overlay. Um, the big thing with this one, this lot is that the setbacks are pretty far back. It sits further back, I think, than the other one does because there's a, a gas line easement that runs through here. Uh, that kind of prevents, prevents you from setting around the top there, so. There's really not much, there's nothing, to my knowledge, Ben, is there anything different about this floor point? Nothing, yeah.
Not that I could see.
That you could see.
Is there anything different?
Yeah, identical to it. So pitch roof. Everything, everything is the same as the one that we previously approved at the, uh, previous meeting. So that is the first one. Um, the second, uh, all those other cases. Um, three, four, five, and six are a little bit different. These are for duplex units. Where I put the, I don't have the drawing here. Grab the drawings for this. So these are duplex units. Um, and so they are essentially two, two single family homes stuck back to gag back with a gap in between. Is it ten foot gap between the two units?
I've printed renderings if that's helpful.
Yeah, that would be helpful.
These are the ones I submitted with the applications. These are the ones that you just sent today.
Yeah.
Yeah, the ones that were submitted to the application are slightly different.
It wasn't as big of a gap. Yeah, I don't remember.
An inch gap.
Yeah, it was like really small.
Back then, the ones you have in front of you there are a representative gap.
The gap is guy, just, just the lots big enough to where we can separate it a little bit to where we don't have, you know, you don't have to have those walls touching. Um, so that's the thought process there.
What would the area in between be used for? Would you project that?
Just common space or? You don't think someone would try to put a car in there? Oh, no, not that. That wouldn't be, that's not the intent. We're just thinking it's, you know, there's not a lot of outside space, right? So, um, well, somebody wanted to park a stroller underneath there or something like that.
Just a covered.
Just a covered area.
And a break between the two dwellings.
Now, if they did park a car there, would that be a problem?
Yeah, it may cause a problem. Who gets to put their car there? Just sell it to motorcycle people. There you go, yeah, motorcycle parts.
Request is one for the similar to previous approved. Then three more of the duplex, like four more, even more duplex.
Which would be on the, uh, east side of the existing house there.
Those are house would be oriented north and south.
Correct.
Longwise, yeah.
So ninety feet from one end to the other.
As far as containers, how many containers on duplexes? It two per each? Both are two container duplexes. So four.
That's right. Wasn't it five containers each? No, there's four containers in that configuration right there. But there was a fifth one that was broken up.
There was a fifth one in the single. But it's a, but it's a three bedroom. This is a two bedroom. Two forty foot containers. How does that layout on, on the box?
Uh, that would be right here. See your setback there is thirty feet.
Is that the, if that's the.
No, this is the one that doesn't have the gap.
That's the one that doesn't have the gap, so it goes ten foot farther back.
Ten foot further back or split five and five, I don't.
So they run north and south, they're saying. The narrow end is facing the street or closest.
Right. The required building setback is twenty-five feet.
So we did take a field trip. Linsburg. Um, this is, now this floor plan is the same floor plan that ends up in the duplex, correct? Okay, so this is the, the front of one of the duplex of the dup- or the single, single home that is uses an Airbnb in Linsburg. Um, so this is probably a little bit different than what you're proposing, because this is stuck out, but same kind of idea, the frontage would look the same. And then I got a couple others. This is the interior from the kitchen. Um, yeah, you can kind of see the finish a little bit in here. And then they.
I'm living in there right now, just for the week.
Here's another. Good night, if I could grab it. There we go. Here's kind of the back view, which is, is what the services would look like on the ones proposed. It would be the core, you'd just have the side of the box.
So if you're driving past the street, what are we seeing?
You're seeing basically this.
That's what we would see on Third Street? So we would see, in a sense, the back of it too.
Okay. And I got some more. So this is what, uh, we went to the ones under construction, which is the same floor plan again. Snapped a few pictures, kind of what that looks like. And see how the roof lining goes there, maybe not the best picture, but they, you know, they've got the, a roof which is pitched on one side and then this, um, siding piece covers, covers the where the elevation changes. Uh, gives some room to run wiring and HVAC present, well, maybe not HVAC, I don't know what all you're running up through there, but wiring at least.
Just wire. Or insulation.
How much overhang is there?
Uh, four foot.
So we've got, uh, this is, this is kind of, this is interesting because we looked at how the boxes are joined together. They're, they're spot welded in, in different areas and then there's a piece of, is it angle iron or steel? I beam that runs through there, uh, to stabilize those. Here's kind of another section, so you can sort of see how the flooring is, it's, it's the same way on that, right? So it's a, that's how they're joined together and they are, I didn't, I don't know if I included the one where we had the, uh, foundation, but they're all secured to the foundation. Yeah, here we go. So the corners are, are secured and fully welded around the corner and then they're spot welded as you move down through which secured it to the foundation. And this is a crawl space foundation, which is what you're proposing here too. Yeah, there's another shot of that kind of side. Just sort of a wide angle of what we got.
So the iron is bolted to the cement and then welded to the.
The angle iron, it's, it's all, um, poured in place. The angle iron is fastened to the forms. Uh, and then that's actually your pore line for your walls. And then, um, their J hooks is welded underneath the angle iron down to the rebar that's set in, in the walls. They're, they're like hooked in there every.
That would meet the qualification for permanent foundation.
Yeah, and that's uplift prevention, so the wood won't fall away.
This is a kind of a view entering one of the rooms, you can see they're, they're all finished with drywall and then they're also planning on going back in with flooring on, on these, I, you know, plan, yeah, okay. There's the other room. So, I mean, they're not, it's, it's a box, so it's, you know, I wouldn't describe them as spacious, but they are, um, yeah, I mean, they, they, they finish pretty well, I think. There's kind of the bathroom angle here. Let's see how that looks, but that, yeah, those are, there's some in progress pictures we snapped. And I, you know, I'd classify the workmanship that we saw as being pretty good. I don't know if there's any issue with anything you, there wouldn't be any issues with us as far as how that gets built.
So what's the difference between the duplex and the single thing that obviously is double? Is it, is it built the same way specification wise as far as what's would be being asked of us?
I think they're all, I mean, it's essentially the same, same floor plan and you're just flipping it. And then stacking them back to back with the ten foot, ten foot gap in between. Uh, which would be, the roof would extend over that gap and, you know, it's going to be bored flat there, so you wouldn't have, you know, not crawl space right there, but yeah, they're essentially the same thing, just butted up against each other.
Does it work for parking on the side? I mean, this first picture. I mean, there's one car farther, truck farther up than the other one, is it wide enough to goes around the other one or how would it work for the?
Can you go back to the, uh, site line?
Yeah.
I can't remember what I had for width in there, but I thought I had it wide enough where you could get high.
Twenty feet across? Be tight, but you can do it. Well.
Yeah, unless this, this owner and their car parked here and then company showed up and parked here.
Right.
And that, then that blocks it off.
They'd have to park behind, stay safe, wouldn't they? Shouldn't park side by side, I guess, essentially.
What's the required parking for?
Two off-street parking spaces per dwelling.
So since that would be considered two dwellings, you would need four?
But it could be single file, I mean, all could be four in a row this way.
Doesn't, it, there's nothing specific as to the configuration of the parking. Or off, two, two off-street parking spaces per. Is there alley access to that? Or will there be an alley in there that would allow access into that pad from the alley end?
No. Not currently.
Not those.
So that's, that could put a real parking issue with the back unit.
Yeah, um, in another city that I'm aware of, they will not count as parking spots any that are blocked by other parking spots. In other words, you can't double stack them.
Yeah, well, that, it's never come up here.
Because I think that would be a key thing is that if if the one person, if, if they parallel park them, they're okay, but if they just go in and park them, then we've got war between neighbors.
Right, and who's going to enforce that?
Nobody.
Well, there's really, yeah, there's no jurisdiction for us to do that, that would be.
And, and that can be a real problem. And I've dealt with this parking issue before.
Yes, you have.
So I guess I'm a little, I mean, I don't really hundred percent know, are these to be sold as separate homes or is it to be rented out as rental income? So in that situation, the landlord or the property manager would be the one that would have to be dealing with the parking.
That's correct. And that is the intended, have these guys, you know, leaving that outside lane open.
I guess the part that's farther in, they could be side by side because no one's going to be on the end.
Nobody care about that, it's not blocking.
Almost got to back out.
But yeah.
To get out of there. There's a great solution to to that, it's just in that configuration, I mean, other than making it wider.
Is there anything keeping it from being a little wider or not?
No, we absolutely could. We just have to shift everything to the left a little bit, which I actually thought of that, but I was trying to preserve as much grass and outside area and, and not just concrete, you know.
How much room is from the, the end of the concrete pad to the back of the park? It looks like there's a fair amount of room there.
Thirty-five.
It would be twenty-five feet after we get that gap in there. So you could extend that and put something back in there.
Sure.
That would, you know, and then create more of a drive through there as opposed to a parking area.
And the one car could park underneath that space.
You wanted to just allow the cars to park here, maybe you could paint some stripes and put no parking.
Right.
You know, on, on that part right there and that would at least get the idea across.
Remind him, and really it is visitors, whoever brought that up, that's what the problem's going to be, right?
Well, not if you got a family with two cars.
Right.
You know, which most families have these days. The visitor would be a third car, which would really create a problem.
Are they allowed to park on the street?
Yes, it's not a no parking street, but that, the reason for requiring two off-street parking spaces to so that there won't be parking.
But, but I guess good parking in the street.
Actually, with being ninety feet, they've actually they've got four parking spots right in front of the building plus more out to the, um, edge of the property, because you go all the way out to the edge of the property counting parking spots. So there's number of parking spots isn't a problem.
You're talking about in this area here?
No.
Because we have ordinance against parking.
Yeah, no, 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 no. You figure twenty foot per car, then this is ninety feet. Then you can park four cars and still have ten foot left over and you can park all the way out to the property line.
Right, so there'd be more parking.
More parking here in the driveway. It's just a matter of. So you know, are, are we creating a problem between neighbors when creating a situation where they have to park that way?
If I could, yeah. Um, another thought is, is to have parking in here. So you could have two, two in here, narrow this up to one lane, going back to two lanes and you could park back here again. So these guys have this, these guys. Split it up. Again, I was just trying to keep that road front green and open and.
Yeah, sure.
It's all going to work.
I think that would save you more headache and as a property manager having it.
I would see that as. You bear them off this way instead, so you're not blocking the front of the could you put these two here and then a single lane and then these two up here?
How, how close can the concrete driveway be to?
Right on the property line.
Right on the property line?
Go right to the property.
Well, yeah, concrete can, for sure.
Just a thought, yeah.
That would make sense too. They may have any interest in seeing the interior designs of things. I mean, this is effectively very similar, so you, I mean, it's just not really anything you haven't seen.
Just, it's just two bedrooms instead of.
Right, instead of three, so.
And the bedrooms are small, but they, but they beat the code criteria.
I think they're about the same size as the other one is, so.
I mean, it, it is a small space, but it's efficiently used, I will say that. It doesn't, doesn't feel super cramped. You know, I, I think it'd be kind of ideal for someone who's younger and, you know, that hasn't accumulated a lifetime full of stuff. But, yeah, I think, and we actually, we had that conversation, our, our new assistant city, to the city administrator, she was, she was pretty jazzed about this, uh, she was like, this would be great for me because I'm, you know, she's twenty-two and doesn't have a.
Because if you could put a, just a twin bed in the bedroom, then, you know, then you've got.
Pretty fair amount of room, yeah.
Well, for retired people that want to sell their bigger house.
It's all zero entry. Well, no, there's steps, right?
Sure is, but I mean, it's only one step, so we could easily ramp that.
And so the idea would be this would be somebody that would be a permanent rental. It isn't like an Airbnb.
Right, yeah, yeah, all rentals.
Now, the, the beds that you have pictured there, are those the size of queen size or king size or do you know?
That's the queen size.
Queen size, okay.
You're choosing rentals opposed to selling it as a.
I mean, we wouldn't be really opposed to it. I mean, it is an option. We, we're just thinking that the town needs rentals, so build some rentals.
But if someone wanted to buy one, you'd certainly sell it. If their money is green.
If their price is right, yeah. You know, the market is here, the rental price would be comparable to lot of rentals in town or?
Well, I would hope so.
How long does it take from beginning to build to finished product?
Uh, we're getting faster. So these, uh, you know, I'd say five weeks. Give or take.
Is it quicker for the single units?
Or just a single one? Oh, absolutely, a lot quicker, because we can essentially build those off-site for the most part. Up to the roughen inspection anyway. And then we'd have to have Ben to inspect it and then we could finish it, but it would cut out a lot of that upfront time.
Is there any provisions for storm shelter?
I didn't put any in. That's not required, that's not required. Good idea.
Got crawl space, I guess, so.
Boy, that's, it's not going to go anywhere, so.
Right, yeah.
Good in this, yeah.
Yeah, I mean. Still, still box.
Yes, those other critters that live down there.
Well, they're not scared.
Is this what we had for years?
Truck doesn't come with it.
Maybe.
Maybe, if the price is right.
Price for everything.
Do we have any indication what administration at, at Linsburg has to say about their experience up to this point?
I, I didn't hear anything negative from him. I mean, I, I think the same, it's, it's it's probably going to be the same issue. It's, it's a kind of a culture shock issue, you know, based on the type of the house. I, I'm sure they had, they didn't really say that they had the same kind of conversation, but I'm sure it was similar to that. Uh, maybe even more so in Linsburg, which has got, you know, uh, kind of a curated look to it, you know, it's, it's got a very particular style. Uh, I would say that the ones that are next to, um, the rental house, there's a, you know, it's, it is right across the street from the park, uh, it's right next to traditional two-story house and it is about a half a block from Bethany College, so it sits in a neighborhood, I mean, it's right in the middle, right in the middle of the neighborhood and it didn't seem out of place to me. I mean, it is striking.
It was a nice lot.
Yeah, we really liked that on that because it's.
Well, I can tell you, I, I've stayed in that one numerous times and I purposely leave the doors open so when people walk by, because they're very interested. You know, and they, they walk through it and they ooh and ah and, um, you know, you get some people that are super traditional that, oh, it doesn't look Swedish, so it shouldn't be here, but overall, we've had really good feedback. You can talk to Christie, city.
City administrator.
Administrator. And I know she's, knows a lot about the project and Milton. The inspector. And get feedback from those guys for sure.
It had a stucco finish on the front in the one end. Was that required by Linsburg or did?
No, we chose to do that on this one, um, just for the reasons that we just were talking about. We knew it was a kind of a traditional town and we didn't want it to be that, that culture shock, you know? Uh, so we thought, hey, we'll, we'll do this to, you know, one side, leave the other side raw, so they can see, you know, it's a container. So we ju- we just opted to do that.
In this, this one, you're not doing that.
We are not doing that to this. In fact, in this one, you left the one, the wall that separates the two bedrooms, the container wall with the, with exposed conduit, you know, so that one of the bedroom walls is a, is a container wall. It adds a little bit of interest. And, and also been the, the ceiling is.
Oh, right, right.
Container as well. No. You can see the ceiling there.
Yeah, I can kind of see that, where just LED, um, like can lights, I guess, LED can lights. Should stop, so. Is the intention to paint them black like previous ones?
Uh, these, we're thinking black, but I mean, we're open to color. We don't, you know, whatever we think is going to fit best in the community. This one here is gonna, gonna be white base with black trim.
Yeah, that's pretty common now. That's a pretty modern set of finishes.
More questions or comments? From commission members, city staff?
Well, we, we had talked a little bit about, um, a sidewalk and whether or not a sidewalk would be beneficial to go to run from, you know, along on that north side of C Street all the way.
Third Street.
Third Street.
All the way, third street, all the way to pretty much. But that would be, yeah, a joint project with the city.
There's not one on the other side, right?
Correct.
There's a pretty fair amount of blocking traffic along Third Street.
So, yeah, in our, actually in the city's trail plan, that, that is an extension that we have in plan. Um, it would pick up here and go all the way over to D Street. Um, this area right here is reserved for this whole development. Uh, at one point, Russell Groves and I talked about him giving that back to the city and putting in a little nature park or something. Still an option, I guess, but, uh, you know, we've, we've gone out and we actually two years ago, applied for a grant to do this section, didn't get that one, but uh, it is in the master plan for that. uh, it is in the master plan for that. The one that goes out to Dollar General is actually the next piece that we would do, but it's, it's in there.
So you have that one put up, so where would these be, uh, on there?
So, um, the one we approved before goes right here, the single family we're having a hearing on, joint hearing on right now will be right here. And then you'd have one, two, three, four. There's actually, uh, you should probably, the plat, but there's one, there's a gap in between here, cause where, uh, Lincoln Street would be, there's a gap. I platted it with that in mind. Shave the plat. Yeah, this one won't use it for anything. So, this is the existing house right here. I don't know if you can see that or not, it's kinda hard glare, but um, this lot, this lot, this lot, there's a gap here where Lincoln is, and then this lot.
Would plan on extending Lincoln out eventually?
The thought was, you know, this whole area north here is platted, or was platted, um, for an entire subdivision, um, so to rephases, I think, um. So the, the part that runs on Third Street was phase one, and then if that was successful, I think Russell Groves' plan was to extend the infrastructure up to Lincoln, uh, kinda make a cul-de-sac in another area, and then eventually go to the east and pick up back on the Jefferson. One of those streets, it would pick back up on there, cause there's another, if you go further down, you can see there's another gap in here that matches up with Ma- I guess it's Madison.
There were several concepts on what that second to third phase.
What it could be, yeah. There was never an official plat filed for those, so um, right now, it's blank slate, uh, officially, but there's lots of different options there. The only thing that's official are those lots that run all the way down the length of Third Street, and then this, this right here, which is a reserve area.
But yes, there are right of ways. So those two lots on either side of Lincoln could, could potentially be corner lots.
Yeah, it could be.
Which would make a lot nicer parking with the duplex in the income off of that street as opposed to coming off of Third.
If you were to put that street infrastructure in there, yeah.
Yeah, good point. Then you'd have some nice parking.
Absolutely.
My eyes are running around. That doesn't look right, though. It's hard to see.
You just have to turn the one around so that faces the side of the roof, too.
Eagle view.
Does change your setback.
Yeah, it would change.
Yeah, it would change setbacks.
You're gonna get a tree issue down here.
But we have not, we've got a right of way there, but we haven't, I mean, would the right of way be considered a street for setback purposes?
That the street's not there.
That's a really good question.
I don't think so, but.
If a street went there, then setbacks would be, setbacks would be improper. It'd be a
Can kinda see.
Longer form of use.
I guess the question ultimately is, does Lincoln ever actually get built? No, it's a different ownership up on that north piece now, so I don't know.
Which, then if that was in, it looks like there's, there's easement along the back of those then.
There isn't, there is an alley.
For an alley, which could make some access a little bit nicer on those, on those rear tenant duplexes. In that you could go down the alley to get in how.
What's back there? An electric back there?
Yeah.
Electric, right, yeah.
Electric and sewers back.
And the, the, the deal we had made, I don't know that it ever got put down in writing, but I have it in my notes with Russell Groves, that the developer was gonna gravel that.
Which would still be an option. Truly, um. You could gravel Lincoln, that Lincoln wanted to as well, I mean, that would just be something we'd have to work out. It'd be private infrastructure, cause it's it's not, city's not gonna maintain it, I guess, is what I would say, but could be useful. Uh, this is the problem, this program, it shifts so much.
And get those big black.
Black areas, doesn't pick up, is based on aerial stuff, but. Yeah, so this would fill, and then you'd have how many more lots? Nine more lots?
What, you're gonna take one of those out for a road possibly?
Oh, I thought there was a road platted in here, but it doesn't look like there is. I mean, there's this, this, uh, here, which I'm.
Isn't it? You know how wide that right of way is in the back? It doesn't look that wide.
Doesn't.
That's an alley, I think it's just twenty feet.
Yeah, we can see that, that does not help at all. You can measure it.
You have, yeah, you have a measuring feature.
If I can get it close enough. Trying to do this from this distance is not great.
Could be a ref.
Twenty-three feet?
It'll be twenty foot.
Be twenty footer, yeah. Take three feet off of mouse.
Yeah.
Other questions or comments, or are we ready to?
You wanna talk about those again?
Oh, yeah, you can bring that part up. There, there's some, there's gonna be some utility issues that have to be addressed here, too.
The distance, if you zoom out a little bit, Matt.
Hopefully it's.
No, that doesn't help.
That.
Moving over.
Scooch it maybe? There it goes, resets. Maybe a little bit more.
So there's a fire hydrant, let me see, I'll jump on. This is North Washington here. So there's a fire hydrant.
In that corner or something.
Right on this corner, I think. So anyway, that you need, there, uh, the distance between fire hydrants is five hundred feet, but there's no more than two hundred and fifty feet to a, to a lot. So, we don't make that, we get from here, we can get these lots are covered, but then this one, this one, and this one are not. Cause the next hydrant is over here. So we're gonna have to add a hydrant somewhere in this area where we can, where we can permit those.
So how are the houses on three, on Lincoln coming in? Their fire hydrant lower?
Yeah, there's a hydrant.
Down in that block.
Okay.
That was just one of the things I discovered, and that was also one of the things that we talked about with Russell Groves, when we were talking about developing that area. But that's something that I've, I've been just unaware of, and so it's all in the plan, but I just wanted the commission to know about that as well.
So who owns the land actually there? Is it Russell Groves or somebody else?
These guys.
You own?
Yeah.
Russell Groves was the original developer.
Right, right. So would, would the new hydrant go on their property or on the old property? On the.
It would try on the main on the south side of the street.
The main is on the south side, but if you wanted to bring it across the street, certainly could.
Yeah.
It's just more expensive, you know?
Yeah, it'd be more costly to do that.
And between that hydrant and the next one down, the other lots would all be covered.
No, there would have to be another hydrant added.
There's, yeah, the distance isn't quite right, yeah.
Would it help if it was on the other side?
Maybe.
I mean.
Well, when you start measuring distance, maybe. You know, typically, you don't drop a hydrant in the middle of a, a block, I mean.
Right.
We're trying to do it here, but even if it was on this side of the street, you know, you're picking up some distance there, you may catch another one, but.
Yeah, I, I didn't calculate that out. It, 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 cause it's, it's relative and close. Then you'd have to weigh the cost of, you know, boring under the street, as opposed to just adding another hydrant.
Right, yeah. Should make you aware that we've done all the proper notifications. That's part of this process, too. Uh, so letters were sent out to everybody within, what is it, five hundred feet, two hundred feet of proposed projects. We marked off every one of those lots, sent a letter. Uh, we also published it in our official publication, which is our website, so it's all out there, and hopefully y'all found the packet, which is also on the website, um, so adequate, adequate time and effort to get it out to the public for, for notification. Met all of our obligations there.
Yeah, any feedback?
I haven't had any feedback. Um, no one has called me or left a message for me.
Are we ready to take action? Well, I have absolutely no problem with the plans. Assuming they're done properly, I think it'll be the community. My only hangup is that originally, I mean, the reason for having them put in separately was so that we could see the results of one build before we move into another build. So we'd like to see, I'd like to see, I always use I, we, instead of I for something, I've done that for years. I would like to see, um, the, a completed, the completed one, the single one that we've already approved before we move ahead with any of the others. Um, and that's my thoughts on it. So my inclination would be to table these until such time as we see the finished product.
Okay, um. I, again, will extend the invitation to go visit member, Linsburg.
Yeah.
And that will show you what the product is gonna be, the quality uh, is gonna be identical.
If you received approval to just move forward, would you start with the duplex then?
Lewis, over the duplexes.
But from what you said earlier, it wouldn't take that long to do the single unit.
No, but it, it's, it's what makes the most sense financially. And it makes the most sense to do these duplexes and get it rented versus the single family we would sell, right? So there's more risk to us. Either it's sitting on the market a long time, it doesn't sell for what we thought it would sell for, that type of thing, right, so.
Yeah, but one of our considerations is not, I mean, we've looked at it and we say, yeah, cool, and, and you, you've got a, a firm plan now, which you didn't have earlier. And all that, but another part is community feedback. And if you build the first one, and we suddenly get tons of comments that, you know, why is that ugly thing being built in our town? Then that might sway our thoughts on having more of those. If everybody says, yeah, that's cool looking, then it is a good plus for you guys. Um, and people here aren't gonna go to Linsburg and look at the Linsburg thing, um.
Well, I would, I would say that if I'm getting good results in Linsburg, then I would think I would be getting better results here, or feedback, rather.
Yeah.
Well, and my thought is, you have a need for housing, and the longer we wait, the more the need for housing grows, and I understand what you're saying, and I came on to this thing very late, since I'm a relatively newbie here. But when I drive around town and including issues with my own house, there's lots of things that I think are eye source. And, you know, I wouldn't necessarily want to live by certain houses that there's no control over, but because they're made of wood, then there isn't any real recourse for that either.
True enough.
So sometimes people have to adjust to what they're not always comfortable with.
And I think our original idea of one, wanting to see something built, we now have at a, just in another town.
True.
And, and we know the quality is, is there.
And you guys have gone.
Yeah, we walked.
And walking at one that's being built.
I was leaning toward, toward you, Larry, with waiting. But if there's one bit built already, then it's gonna be the same.
You're using the same people?
I'm sorry?
Using the same people?
Um.
Like your.
Maybe a different she-rocker, but yeah, all the, all the major trades.
The outside.
The same, yeah.
It's really more concerned with the outside.
One-trip containers that you're using?
Yep.
Yeah.
One-trip containers. Does our discussions concerning parking and whether you might change parking, would that affect anything as far as what we're approving? We're not really approving the location of the parking, are we?
But you could, cause we did talk about design changes to the driveway.
Yeah.
And you, you could make that part of the motion that those design changes would be in place. Or we could ask a new drawing.
Yeah, but we didn't really settle on any design change.
Right.
But, I mean, I think that's more of an issue for the, for the developer than it is for us. We brought up our concerns, but I think, you know, they're the ones that are gonna have to deal with angry tenants.
It meets the requirements.
And it meets the requirements, but if he wants to change that, would that affect anything, I guess?
Not the changes that we had talked about.
Which, which one would you do first? Which lot would you be looking at?
I'll just do right by the house, on the east side of the house.
The east side of the house?
Yeah. Just two oh four. Okay. But wouldn't you?
Okay.
If you, if you got approval, wouldn't you start separate? Yeah, absolutely, and that's why I submitted these four, is because that's what we feel comfortable biting off all at one time. And that's gonna make it the most economical project for us to do in, in chunks.
So if we're talking about that Lincoln Road there, is that something you'd maybe adjust to make that gravel and then change the parking so that you can access it through?
We definitely could, um. Yeah.
Make sense.
I mean, I, I would like to just say, hey, we understand that you know, the parking could be optimized, and we are open to do, you know, so the ones off to the left, like two oh four, and we talked about putting parking right in front of the first one, and then the back one has parking to the, to the east of it. You know, that, that's not a problem. Now, when we get over to that, that right of way, absolutely, we could come out right in there and, and hit that back one.
But then that would would that trigger the setbacks?
Oh, the twenty-five foot? It would.
Yeah.
But then you could just, you could scoop the, the dwelling over to the to the west a little.
Yeah, there's.
And then put like diagonal parking in there or something, you know?
Yeah.
Cause there would be room to the west.
You have to adjust the footprint a little bit there, but there's enough room to do it.
Okay. Cause you'd have a twenty-five on each side.
Right.
And just to be clear, approval, if we approve this proposal as is, it still goes to city council for final approval, right?
Yeah. Yeah, you're effectively doing a zoning change, or it's an overlay, so it's gotta go through the city council, it'll be passed by ordinance. Um, so there'd still be another opportunity for people to make comment, review it. The city council typically takes the planning commission's recommendation, but they don't. Uh, they've never done it here when I've been here, but usually, uh, you know, this is your work, and they, they are confident that you've done your due diligence. Trust you guys to do that, so.
And you, from start to finish, did you say five weeks?
About what?
About five weeks?
You and Ash will be starting off five, you'd be going one, two, three, four, five, right?
We'd probably, we're all foundation, they'd all be going on at, at the same time.
Well, that's what I meant, you'd start one, and then when you finish, whatever on this one, you'd started on this one, and then started on that one.
So I'm not exactly sure what the, what the motion would be, but I would. Motion would be, but I would motion that we go ahead and give approval.
Yes, this is, this is where it's going to get technical, we have to do each one of them separately, so. We had the hearing kind of collectively, but you'll have to have an action on each case independently, so. You need to do case Z twenty-four, two thousand twenty-four oh two, which is the single family one on the west. Um, and then, you know, go through the line and do each case. So you got to have an official action on each one.
Okay. One more opportunity for questions or comments, and then we'll. Ask for a motion regarding uh one oh eight east or the one flowers west. Okay, hearing done. Someone please make a motion then regarding one oh eight, what, east third, which?
I make that motion.
Okay.
Recommend approval.
Recommend recommend approval of the overlay.
Second.
Okay. One more opportunity for comment, and then we'll call for the question. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion has carried, thank you. And then we move on to, well, it looks like you're out of out of order there, but.
Yeah, the addresses, I screwed them up, I just took them by what came in. That's on me, I signed case numbers wrong, but.
Two oh six east third. Which would be the second one east of the existing house, is that correct?
Correct.
Do I hear a motion on that?
Sure, same motion to approve the overlay.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Everybody gets to be on.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion is carried, thank you. Move on to two oh four east third.
I guess I'll move that we approve. Recommend approval for overlay on two oh four.
Okay.
I will second that.
He's got it.
All in favor of recommending approval of the. Two oh four east third, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion is carried.
I moved to prove the overlay of that case. Two oh four dash five.
We did two oh four.
He still moves to.
Two oh eight, I was I was reading the.
He's reading the case number, which is, yeah.
For two oh eight.
I'll second whatever he's trying to motion.
Okay, all in favor of that one, so.
Aye.
Aye, oppose, no.
My turn.
And that motion is carried. One more to go, we're at.
I'll move, I'll move what we approve.
I haven't even said what it is.
I'll prove it anyway. I trust you.
Three oh two east third. Joe has moved.
Second.
Well, did you not second one? I'm sorry, let let Larissa.
Eric can do that one.
I'll second that.
All in favor of recommending approval for three oh two east third, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion has carried. Thank you. Anything anybody has to say on the any of those yet, before we move on to the next agenda item? Okay, that will go to the council, I presume. Within the next thirty days or so at least.
Uh, yeah, so it's got a, we have a ten day waiting period we have to cover first, so it won't be for Tuesday's meeting, but it'll be the nineteenth.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, explain the reason for agenda item date change for March meeting from March twenty eighth to twenty, March twenty-one.
Get out of town, uh, that's the reason why, um. Technically, as of right now today, there's nothing on the March agenda that we don't don't even necessarily have to meet. Uh, the one thing we are working on is the hospital zoning stuff, which I'll cover a little later. Um, but I don't think we'll have a a hearing set for that date, so. If you didn't want to have a March meeting, you wouldn't necessarily have to unless something came up. Uh, but if it was to happen, I would ask that we, we can either move it back a week to the twenty-first, or if you wanted to go on a Wednesday, the. Twenty-seventh, that would work as well. So to.
So the meeting will only be if necessary on the twenty-first.
Correct, yeah. As of today, it's not.
Okay, thank you. Okay, city administrators report.
Yeah, I just want to follow up on the the zoning change for five oh one South Main, uh, did go to the city council, um, it sounds like that Mr. Andrew. Uh, who came in and provided comment at this, had an opportunity to meet with the owner and and. They've kind of reconciled their differences, I guess, on that, um, at least he he seems to think so, or at least for now. Uh, and I think, have you addressed the code issues with that, the porches and stuff with?
I talked to Lance about it, but that's as far as it's gone.
As far as it's gotten, but uh, city council did go ahead and approve that zoning change, again, it's a down zone or reduction in zoning, so it's it's actually more restrictive. Uh, so it'll be able to do an R two, which is a two-family dwelling, he could turn that building into duplex, I guess, or a single-family home. Uh, and then the hospital zoning thing, just following up on that, we are in the process of getting that pretty well fixed, I think. Uh, the issue was, we had zones where the hospital was identified in other places that we needed to adjust, and I think we've got all that, and. The attorney's got that, and I think he's got a language worked out for that, so. Uh, as we do that, we will have to have a a public hearing to to make any kind of official actions with that, go through the same process. Uh, and then it's got to go to the city council for final approval, but I think that the language we originally talked about. Plus all the changes in the other parts of the code will make that work, um, and then talking with the hospital, they were. Fine with that, um, again, it doesn't prevent another hospital from coming in, it just sets a process that if somebody was to want to do a hospital or provide those activities. They would have to come and and do a zoning change for that, so. Um, so we will have that at a future meeting, maybe not the March meeting, but um, it would be the April, I'm probably. That's everything I had to.
Okay. One more opportunity, any other matters that anybody cares to comment on or question before we? I just have one question, if. The crosswalks on B Street. Um, they've got a sign up between subway and the laundry rooms over there telling the students, don't talk, stop traffic, because this isn't a crosswalk. Is there a reason that's not a crosswalk, or would that be something we have to recommend, or is that something the police department does, or how does that happen?
Typically, traffic control stuff goes through the police department, um. I'm not sure why it's not a crosswalk, other than they tried to funnel people into those two.
Yeah, but reality is that's.
Yeah, no, they are, the reality is they'll cross anywhere that's there.
But there's a lot of traffic there.
There is a lot there.
The laundry and.
Right, yeah, so maybe, yeah, that that'd be a suggestion I could take forward and and talk with Jesse about.
I mean, it's not like you usually have to stop at all three of them anyway, you know?
Right. A lot of times you just can go right through, unless unless it's in the morning when they're late for class, and you're trying to take your kid to school.
Yeah.
And then they don't group together, and they go ones and twos. It's not frustrating at all. But yeah, that typically, it's not an issue. We actually have talked about redesigning some of those two, uh, to make the the lights not be automatic flashing, but push button flashing. Um, because the automatic flashing, I think people just sort of take for granted. Um, and if the push button is there, it can, it catches your attention, it gets more if you're. Doing that.
Just so long as it's not a stoplight that stops it.
Oh, no, 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 not going to be a stoplight.
That would take way.
No, no, no. I don't want to mess with stoplights if we don't have to.
You just stick the stop sign in there like camp.
Some crossing card or something.
Build like an over the road.
There you go.
They would love that, yeah.
Well, when they get rid of the the quad, you know, there wouldn't be.
But don't say that, that means I have to get rid of.
Well, that's true.
Well, they could make a structure that could act as a parking garage, too.
That would take care of their parking issue, which is continuous, so.
Yenby bought that, foundation bought that house across and made the parking lot. Is that not supposed to be paved, or?
It has to be non-dust.
Yeah, it it can be gravel as long as it's not limestone. That's what I was told by the author of the survey.
I always thought they had to be paid, but that's fine.
There's an awful lot of parking lots there.
Yeah.
The parking lot doesn't really get used anyway.
I haven't seen many cars on it, yeah.
Not often.
It's usually staff overflow, they have like people coming in to use the building.
Yeah, maybe for board meetings or whatever. Okay. Hey, I think we are then adjourned, thank you.
Thank you.